I'm sorry, and the Small family too. This meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like a motion to accept correspondence in the Reed file.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? That stuff that we get, that we read, has nothing to do with a trial that has been going on in Canton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public forum, is there anyone here who would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Which isn't surprising, because the agenda is pretty, there's a lot of stuff on the agenda. Approval of meeting minutes, open session July 9th, 2024.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain, I was absent at that meeting. Chairman's report, I, nothing really to report for tonight. Except for my members passed in there, or they had the opportunity to change their liaison assignments if they wanted to for the next year. And I haven't heard anything, so I'm going to assume that none of you want to do that. If anything, if anything does come up between now and the next time we meet, just let me know, and we'll handle it, we'll deal with it. New business. Act on the application of Vivian Ivano for a fortune teller's license on the premises located at 418 Bedford Street, subject to receipt of the $50 license fee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Aren't you going to say what you usually say, Dan?
Yeah, I usually say, does she know automatically because she's a fortune teller?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the application of Tempereal Shine LLC Lisbeth Carmona for a Class II Auto Dealers' License on the premises located at 916 Plump Temple Street, subject to the receipt of the $100 license fee. Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I do. I happened to go down there to look at that, and I believe the license is asking for only three cars to be shown for sale. And I looked at it, and I believe you could stay within the rules, that they can probably, if they want, go up to five. They don't have to, but I would like to amend that motion to go, well, it's, I think the license says three, with the possibility of maybe going to five, so.
Okay, is there anyone that want to make that as an amendment to the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make that an amendment.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Mr. Chan?
Is there any discussion? Yes.
May I just make a comment? I just want to be clear, Dan, that I, in the paperwork, the recommendation was for 11 total spaces, which included one designated as handicapped. But I think that you want to increase the recommendation of 11 total.
Okay.
Which is two spaces for each pit, lift, or bay, one space for each employee with the remainder to be used as needed. But I think you wanted to increase that to 13.
The sales, right, for the sales.
For the overall, total.
Oh, all right, you're going to do it overall, fine, yeah.
But sales is five. That was the amendment?
Well, the amendment is, it leaves them three spaces for sale, sale of cars, and I see in front, where there's like six spaces, and I think five of them, and that's, there's also a handicap space and another space there for somebody else beside it. And then there's five more spaces in the front, and then you get spaces in the back. So I think...
Keep it that way, then, if it's just those, the spaces, as you said, for sales. I just want to make sure that they were getting all the other spaces.
Oh, yeah, they get all the other sales. I just thought that their license says three, up to five, maybe. I think that's what Laurie was saying.
So the amendment is to increase the spaces for cars for sale?
For sales, yes, yes.
Everybody get it? Okay. Any, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Act on the request of Jessica Cunningham, on behalf of the Whitman Mothers' Club, to conduct a 5K road race on Sunday, October 20th, 2024, beginning at 12:00 noon, and to close down the one-way portion of Whitman Avenue in order to set up for the race. Subject to any conditions opposed by the Select Board and/or Chief Hanlon. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you have anything for this, Chief?
I do.
Is it going to be a rain date?
Good evening, Select Board. So regarding road races in general, and really when they are fundraisers, the Police Department makes every effort, as we have over the years, to accommodate that by not charging for road closures, details, and everything else. And just the way the budget is going, that's not going to be feasible anymore. So we're all in favor of helping out on a charity. My only question is, are we going to pay for road closures?
Yeah, this is on behalf of the Whitman Mothers' Club, which is...
Exactly. But that means I have to shut off probably between six and eight shifts that won't get filled.
So what do you suggest?
I don't know. I don't know how much they would actually fundraise if we had to charge them for details. I'll leave that up to the Board. How to proceed, we have done it in the past for different charity organizations. We're actually doing La Vida Bella, but they were, had already previously approached us on that one. So I just found out about this one last week.
All right. One was, does anyone have any questions of the Chief? Do you have any response, Mary Beth?
I do. I have a comment, if I may. I think we spoke. So on this race, you had talked about maybe having a different route, that was a smaller route that would require less men. Is that possible?
So I did adjust the route, kind of on my own. And the only, they want to start and end near Old Colony Brewing, which is on Washington Street here, and that's why they want to shut off the one-way section of Whitman Ave. And so that, in and of itself, kind of presents challenges. There's different routes that we've run over the years, and probably the easiest one is what used to be the Panther Prowl. It starts at the high school and ends at the high school, and it comes down Franklin Street, South Ave, up Winter Street. And a 5K is a 5K, so you have to begin and end it and make sure there's five kilometers in the race. So with, even with the amended route, which I amended the end to turn off of South Ave, and then come back up Lake Street and down Whitman Ave, as opposed to the full length of South Ave, and that would obviously involve more officers for the side streets heading over to Broad Street. So even with that, I think the bare minimum is 10 officers. And at the rate on a weekend, that would be $2,800.
$2,800?
At least details.
Have you talked to Jessica about this?
I have not.
Should we, I wonder if we table this, so that we can come up with, I mean, when's the race going to be for, October?
October 20th.
Right, so it's like, over a month. So we table it to our next meeting, that way the Chief can talk, and maybe they can come up with a reasonable solution to cover the $2,800.
What if we change the route to the Panther?
Mary Beth?
I think that would be a great idea. And I would just like, maybe, because you don't normally do three in a year, right? And you may have three this year. So maybe...
So the other piece to this is, you know, budget-wise, we're going to be putting more officers through probably police academies, full-time police academies, which is going to be an additional burden. I don't want to get up here and speak about the whole police budget. At the same time, it is, that's what's impacting our decision here, if we had...
And auxiliary offices, correct?
Yes. That's been depleted. In years past, it was a lot easier to have volunteers, as opposed to having to pay everybody, so.
Is it our year to host the Veteran's Day Parade, too? I think, like, we're going to have a couple of... Yeah, thank you.
The other thing is the 150th, the town's 150th, we're going to plan a big... That was, that was on my mind, as of last week.
Mar.
What if you went with that route, the Panther route, and what if we tried to get volunteers? Is, that seems like an easier route to going through the center of town, or even close all these side streets. But that's, there's much wider sidewalks, it's much more straight, you know, and maybe we could get volunteers from now until then.
We're still going to need to shut down the roads. It's, it would be less of an impact, for sure. And then, obviously, the approval of the school district to use the high school as a beginning and end point.
Okay, would, I think it would be good for you to talk to Jessica. I don't want to turn down the Mothers' Club.
No, no, neither do I, unfortunately. That's the situation we're in.
So why don't we, why don't we table this until our next meeting?
Sean had a question.
Oh, Sean, sorry.
No, that's all right. I mean, I agree.
I turn to my right more than I do my left.
I'll just have to raise my, speak up a little bit. But I think whatever we can do to help out the Mothers' Club and organizations like the Mothers' Club, I think is something we should really look into. So if we can brainstorm, either on your end, or some sort of compromise with the route, and maybe on our end, if there are, you know, three or four events like this in a year, but these are community events that bring out a lot of people that, you know, really for a good cause, you know, how could we creatively help? Because this is something that I think is really beneficial for, for the town, and it shouldn't just fall on your shoulders budgetarily. But if there's a way that we can help, I think that'd be, I would really like to find that solution.
Would you like a motion to table?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to that we table.
Second.
Second.
And it'd be subject to the Chief and Jessica getting together.
Very good.
And coming back with a plan that allows us to go on.
Hopefully, our best.
All those in favor of table?
Aye.
Now, it's table to the, we haven't set the meetings up in September, so we'll, actually, we could do that now.
That's a good idea.
We cannot meet on the 3rd of September, because that is a primary for the, like, three or four people that will, that will go to it. What else? On the, on the 11th, we were doing something. We could meet on the 10th, I suppose, or we could meet later on in the month.
I will be away the 24th.
Okay. Actually, so will I.
Yeah, so the 10th or 17th is probably the best.
Okay, 10, oh, what do you want, guys? 10th and...
Anything's fine with me.
What would you like, 10th or the 17th? 10th or the 17th?
Let's do the 10th if we need to set up, if we postpone the special town meeting vote later on, because Tom Hickey's not here.
Oh.
If we need to open a warrant.
Okay.
Well, the 10th?
Sure. 10th would be fine.
So does that change the issue about school committee, if we have them?
No.
No, that's the 12th on Thursday.
That has to still be the 12th. Now, the reason I brought that up is because Steve Vois is a school committee member, is going under operation, and he won't, but he can't talk. So he can't make that meeting. So that's one member of the school committee that will not be able to vote.
Be able to be there on the 12th.
Huh? He can't be there on the 12th.
Okay, right, okay.
That's why, last night, when I saw him, I said, well, maybe I'll make a suggestion another day. And he says, he didn't know. I mean, either that, or he just doesn't vote. You know, and I just think that he's been on the school committee a very long time. He should have a right to voice his opinion.
Would he be able to on the 17th?
I don't know. You'd have to call him and find out. But whatever. It's just, you know, something that I said that I'd bring up.
When it comes, when it's time for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so give me something to work with here, guys. 17th or the 10th?
I think maybe with what Dan said, the 17th, if it will keep everything flowing smoothly.
Okay.
Okay, so it'll be the 17th. Chief, you got until the 17th to come up with something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we'll go from there. Good.
So we're not meeting on the 10th, we're meeting on the 17th? Is that what you're saying?
Right. Next item on the agenda, didn't think that was going to be that complicated. Act to appoint Robert Keeman to the position of Member Board of Appeals for the remainder of a five-year term through June 30th, 2029, in order to fill a position vacated by James Chandler. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Act to rescind the appointment of Robert, act to rescind the appointment of Robert Keeman from the position of Associate Member Board of Appeals, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Act to appoint Harold Jones to the position of Associate Member Board of Appeals for the remainder of a two-year term through June 30th, 2026, in order to fill a position vacated by Robert Keeman.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Act to rescind the appointment of Julian N. again from the position of Member Whitman Cultural Council, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Act to rescind the appointment of Brian Scudderan, Scooteran, Scudderan?
Scudderan.
Scudderan, from the position of Alternate Member Conservation Commission, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Act to rescind the appointment of Fred Small as Member Bylaw Study Committee and as Member Capital Committee WHRSD representative.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that really necessary?
Very sad.
I don't know why that's necessary. Who said it was necessary?
I'm not sure who said it was necessary. I'm not sure who said it was necessary.
Yeah, okay. Just a thought.
Right.
Announce Whitman vacancy on the WHRSDC and discuss process to fill said vacancy. Mary Beth, would you like, I had a number of conversations with the Chair of the School Committee, maybe one or two weeks ago, and we came up with, and she was in contact with the Superintendent, I was in contact with Mary Beth, and came up with a number of, we came up with a, with a schedule that seems to work. It seems to work to pays, that pays respect to Fred Small, too, because it, we shouldn't be jumping on the, jumping on the floor to replace him. This is going to give some time for people to reflect on, on things. But, so we came up with a schedule.
Yes, we did.
And a process, and Mary Beth will announce it now.
Okay. So this evening, where we've announced it at our Select Board meeting, tomorrow evening, the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, School Committee will announce the vacancy at their meeting. They'll announce the same schedule. We are going to, I actually have an ad that's running in the paper on Thursday to fill the vacancy, and that will have a deadline of September 3rd, to submit letters of interest and resumes. And all letters of interest and resumes will be requested to be sent directly to me, Mary Beth Cotter, as Town Administrator, via my email at mcotter@whitman-ma.gov. On Wednesday, September 4th, the day after the deadline, I will then forward all of the letters of interest and the resumes to the entire Select Board and to the Chairman of the School Committee and Superintendent, and the five Whitman members of the School Committee. Then both the Select Board and the School Committee will post a joint meeting for Thursday, September 12th. We're going to start that meeting at 6 o'clock, and that will be to interview the candidates for the vacancy on the School Committee, for the Whitman position. And so that's the timeline. We, I did put an ad in the paper that will appear on Thursday, and then tomorrow morning, we'll be posting it as well on our town website. And then, of course, the School Committee will be announcing it as well, and there are...
Dan, do you want to?
Yeah, I was just wondering, how did you come up with the date of a Thursday and not a Tuesday or Wednesday?
Just in our discussion on available dates and timeframe from receiving the, you know, the deadline, sending it out, and then having a week or so for people to be able to review all the applications.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, Steve is not here, so I mean, I just, we were talking to him last night, he just, he knew it was on the date that, you know, he couldn't show, he couldn't be there in attendance. I just thought it was kind of unfair. It's almost like, when we reorganized, we wait till we're before board. And I think, you know, it would be best that we had the full members of the School Committee for Whitman and the full Board of Selecting, and find the proper date.
Is there any way you will know when he will be available to?
No, I'd have to, I'd have to call him and let you know. You know, and he may just say, do it. I don't know. I don't know.
He couldn't join virtually?
Huh?
He couldn't potentially join virtually?
He won't be able to speak.
He won't be able to speak. He's having something done to his throat. That's why I said, can you write the person's name down and show it online, you know?
I agree with you, though, it shows a deeper respect.
Yeah.
And Fred Small did so much for this town.
Mm-hmm.
And Steve Vois.
So is Steve.
Yes, and that's what I said, and Steve Vois as well.
Unless you can give Steve a call and find out when he'd be, you know, when he thinks he could do it, and maybe we can change it.
Are there dates that would work particularly well for the whole Select Board?
We don't, the only date that's going to work is a date when Steve can, can be there.
Right, but it may, somebody else may be away, or, you know, there may be other factors. But certainly, I could, I could call Steve, Dan, or...
Yeah, we talked about, yeah, I'll call him and see. And see if we can come up with a date.
How is he going to talk to you when you call him?
No, now. He can call it now.
Oh, okay.
It's just on, he's being operated on that day.
Is being operated on which day?
The day, the Thursday that...
The 12th?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's what I'm saying, he won't be able to speak.
Yeah.
I can call him.
Too bad we don't have a radio show, he could call me.
And, you know, and, but, you know, the School Committee's already decided, and I don't know if he spoke to the School Committee. Maybe want to call Mary Beth Staffen and see if, in fact, when they discussed it at the School Committee about that date, did he have any objection or ask for a change of date, or...
We don't know if they've discussed it at the School Committee.
I don't believe they've met yet.
No, no, no. They said, they set the date, or it was already set at their last meeting. Said it was already set, and he said he couldn't be there. When did you set the date of the 12th?
When we discussed this a week or two ago, and Beth was involved.
And they must have had a meeting since then.
I'm surprised that they would be discussing the process and the dates when they haven't announced the vacancy.
Yeah, true. I don't know.
I don't just...
I'll call Steve, find out what's going on.
The other, I guess, consideration would be that we probably want to announce the day of the interviews, so that candidates applying make themselves available.
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
Well, that was the timeline that we've set up. It's not carved in stone, whatever the...
No, it's not.
No.
Could we do it the week of? You know, he couldn't, maybe if he can't do it Thursday, we could do the Tuesday or the Wednesday? We were talking about the 10th earlier for us, and it seemed to be...
I don't know. Let's see, is it... What about, what about pushing it off until October?
I guess just, yeah.
You had, you had said something about...
Technically, the regional agreement wants us to make the appointment within 30 days. I don't think anyone here is going to enforce that.
Did you see that in the original agreement, too?
Yes, we talked about that.
Yeah, we did, 30 days.
Right.
But we're figuring that if the School Committee and the Selectmen are okay with it, it doesn't make any difference.
Sort of a self-enforcing clause.
Yeah, it is. It's not a law law.
Right. Cover yours, Peter.
[laughing]
Yeah, and there's no, I'm trying to think, any actions. The School Committee's already reorganized, the budget's set in the spring, anything now, hopefully not a contentious vote in the time being where we would want a sixth Whitman member. So there's not like...
Yeah, why don't we, I think Steve ought to be involved.
I think so, too.
Why don't we go back to the, go back to the drawing board?
Yeah, it did go in the papers, so.
Well...
Just for the deadline, not, not the schedule, just the deadline to send in resumes.
Okay, and not...
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine, and the...
We haven't posted any other dates.
The interviews can happen a month later.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll call Steve and find out exactly when he's, you know...
Okay, and we can make sure everyone's available.
I'll call him after the meeting.
Or you could call him now.
[laughing] If I knew his phone number, I was gonna...
Well, no, we're not going to sit here and listen to you talk.
Right, exactly.
You could go to Paul and talk to him.
So we can...
Is that important, type? Okay.
So we can table that?
Sure. Mr. Table Guy, do you want us to move to table?
Motion to the table, that, do we come up with a date?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mary Beth, we'll go back to the drawing board on that one.
Okay.
Sorry.
And I'll get in, I'll get in touch with, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll see what's going on. I'd like to, I really would like to find out if, if all these dates have been announced.
For what?
I'd like to know if these dates were announced.
I don't know if they had it, they mentioned it in the meeting, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. Act on request of Christine Morse for permission to use the Town Hall Auditorium on Saturday, March 15th, 2025, for the purpose of holding a beauty pageant to benefit the Miss Whitman Scholarship Organization.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Is there any need for police at that meeting to...
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Elena Morrow, on behalf of the South Shore Philharmonic Orchestra, to use the Town Hall Auditorium in order to conduct free concerts on December 8th, 2024, and April 27th, 2025, at 2:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of the Town Clerk to sign the September 3rd, 2024 state primary election warrant.
So moved.
Second, sir.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Chief Hanlon to initiate the hiring process for a police officer in order to fill a vacancy due at an upcoming retirement. This includes calling for a list from civil service. Your turn, Chief.
Thank you again. So in the past, the recent past, as far as hiring, we have started the process somewhat early to get the process rolling. It's a little bit different now with post-re requirements, and so we try to get ahead of it a little bit more. And so this will put us in good shape to hire someone when the time comes, anticipated to be sometime in December.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
South Shore Vocational Regional Agreement presentation. Is something happening there that it's not going to happen tonight?
I'd request that we pass over that.
Okay.
Will we do it? Pass over?
Do we know when it's going to be passed over, too?
Our next meeting, as long as it's not September 3rd. Tom Hickey was ill and unable to meet this meeting.
to meet this meeting.
He came down with COVID.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, so he couldn't. Spent the weekend in Florida, came down with COVID.
Jeez. If I had gone a little faster, I could have made jeopardy. Okay, set date for the special town meeting. Do you have a recommendation?
I do.
Now, the special, you might want to explain why there's going to be a special, why we'd like to have a special town meeting.
Right, and that went along with the South Shore VOTEC presentation. That is the main reason for the special town meetings. So six towns would need to have a special town meeting to pass amendments that the South Shore Regional VOTEC have made to the regional agreement, basically changing the formula or the rules on how debt is apportioned to the towns for future debt for building projects. And where they're going out for a new building project, currently Whitman has the highest percentage of students, and therefore we would have the highest percent of each debt payment the way it is now locked in for the next 30 years. And so what they're doing is amending the regional agreement, and Tom will get into all the details on this with his presentation, but basically to a four-year rollback average. So every year, it's looking at four years, so it's a much more fair.
Which is really to our, to our advantage.
Absolutely to our advantage. As new towns join South Shore VOTEC and other students come in and our enrollment drops because there are other schools going in, our percentage would drop. And if we don't vote this, we would be locked in to a much higher percent steady for 30 years. So this is so important that we have this meeting. So even though the presentation won't take place until our next select board meeting, I don't see the harm in setting the date.
You have a suggestion?
I do, December 2nd.
December 2nd?
December 2nd, Monday evening. And the reason for that is we wanted to pick a date where Tom Hickey is available as well to speak at each town special town meeting to address this issue.
Okay, so do I have a motion to set the date for a special town meeting for December 2nd?
So moved.
Second.
That's fine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, open the special town meeting warrant. Is there a motion to open the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? And the warrant will be closed when?
For the next town meeting, I was planning on putting it on the agenda to close it. Not next time, I mean, next select board meeting.
Okay, set the September meeting schedule. We, we did, it was the 17th. So that will be when the warrant closes.
And a meeting possibly at the 12th or another time that Steve Boyce is available?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll have to. I'm going to suspect, I mean, we're going to need to announce it, so I'm going to suspect that the new schedule won't be announced until 17th, when we meet next. Right?
That's true, yeah.
When we meet next, we'll, we'll have everything in place for that.
Correct, that makes sense.
So it's probably going to be an October event. Okay, whole business. Attorney Sumners, welcome, Peter. Welcome.
Thank you. So would you like me to give you an overview? Sure. So before you today, because the host community agreement for Berkeley Botanicals that was approved and executed between the town and Berkeley was rejected by the Cannabis Control Commission. The basis for the rejection was just that the date of the host community agreement predated recent amendments to the law. That's, it's not really a legitimate basis for rejecting it. Doesn't mean there's anything wrong with it, but the CCC has been rejecting most applications that have come across their desk. It doesn't appear that they're giving these HCA's a thorough review, they're just rejecting them unless they are the model agreement. So in response to the rejection, Berkeley has reached out and asked whether we, we, leading the board, would be amenable to amending the HCA. And there are many options for doing that, but the reality is, anything other than the model HCA that has been put out by the CCC is unlikely to be approved on the next round of review, and it's unclear at what point they might actually, you know, dig into it and, and see if it is compliant with the amended law. So the question for the board then is, what are you willing to do, or what are you looking to do with the HCA, knowing that this business and all of your businesses, which all have the same host community agreement, are going to be unable to open until they get a host community agreement approved by the CCC, because that is a necessary step for their licensing? And until they're opened, you know, obviously they're not generating any revenue, not generating any taxes, and so we're here tonight to, to find out what the board would like to do with the host community agreement.
Do you have a recommended action?
So I think that it really comes down, my recommended action would depend on, you know, how comfortable the board would be with adopting the model host community agreement. There are a lot of provisions, you know, we spent a lot of time on your existing host community agreement. It, you know, remains in force, just because the, the agreement has been rejected doesn't mean that, you know, both parties haven't agreed to it. We spent a lot of time on that, going through, putting a lot of detail into, you know, how payments are made, the basis for those payments, security issues, inspection issues, requirements for, you know, lighting and odor control, and a lot of that is not present in the model host community agreement. So if, if the board is, you know, willing to go back to your applicants and say, "We will agree to, you know, just adopt the model host community agreement," some of them may still need zoning board of appeals approval through the permitting process, and I'm not sure, I think Berkeley is much further along than, than the others, is my understanding. But then the question would also be, you know, for Berkeley, who has special permit approval already, are they still going to be bound by those, those provisions? So there's, there's some risk in, in going from your existing HCA to the model HCA of, of losing all of that detail that we have in the existing HCA. And if the board is comfortable with that, if you're comfortable with, you know, the statutory scheme that the CCC has a lot of regulatory requirements for, for marijuana businesses, the zoning bylaws that you have in place have a few additional requirements for, for marijuana businesses, and the ZBA has to review these applicants and, and grant them approval. I, I think that whichever, if you're, if you want that information in the HCA, then we're going to have to stick with something close to the existing HCA. If you're comfortable with deferring to these other laws and processes that are in place, the model HCA is likely to get this business open much, much faster than your existing HCA. And I can't put a time estimate for the existing HCA or anything like it, anything that's not exactly the model HCA, but I, like I said, I would suspect that it's going to take several rounds of review and quite a bit of time for the CCC to actually approve that. There's, there's just a lot of dysfunction right now at the CCC. So I, I, you know?
So it's like, go along with the dysfunctional organization, or stick with what we've worked on already, which probably won't be approved by the dysfunctional organization?
Right. So it's really a matter, it's a matter of weighing, you know, how quickly you want this business to get open against how much detail you feel is necessary in the host community agreement, and that's really a decision that has to be made by the board. You know, I, I can, I can support legally you doing either, so.
Okay, I have to go to my detail man here. What do you think, Justin?
So we talked about this at the last meeting a little bit, and my recommendation was to go with the model HCA and, and I think see what protections we had already in the bylaw, and since that time, spoke a little bit with John Goldrosen, the chair of the zoning board of appeals here, to see what else we might be able to put in a special permit. So I think my recommendation would be to adopt the model HCA and require the applicants to appear before the zoning board again to seek a new special permit, because part of the special permit review process that they've already undergone included stuff that was in the HCA. So there's a good justification to make them come back before the zoning board. We may be able to include some of the things in the special permit that were in the old HCA, obviously, you know, within reason. And I think we can cobble together between the bylaw, the special permit, and the model HCA, I don't know, 90% of the protections we have existing, most of the things we would miss out on are some of the specifics around community impact fees, which was the thing that Cannabis Control Commission was cracking down on with this latest round of regulations, and our existing HCA related to community impact fees would probably have been, you know, if it were challenged, would maybe not fare so well.
What do you think?
John Goldrosen, chairman of the zoning board of appeals, so to explain when, we have granted a special permit for this project already, as well as for the other two applicants, but when they came before us, you had already drafted and approved the host community agreement. So we assumed all those provisions were in effect, and we didn't, we didn't impose conditions in our special permit that would have duplicated what was in the host community agreement. So I, you know, I certainly feel that these, these, it ought to be a condition, if you're going to go with a model host community agreement that doesn't have some of those provisions, that the applicant should have to come back to us, apply for an amended special permit. We can put anything that's, you know, land use related or related to the zoning bylaw, put those conditions specifically into an amended special permit, and they can go forward from there, and that won't, it, it won't take us that long to do that, it's just they have to go through the regular process of applying, having us send notices to abuttes and putting an ad in the newspaper, but I would think by the end of October, we'd, we'd be done with our piece of it. As town council said, there'll be some provisions in your current host community agreement that we can't deal with in a special permit, but, you know, a lot of the things we could have.
That's making, that's making sense to me, yes, Sean.
Yeah, I think it sounds like a really good plan. I do have one question about, we did have a requirement that they participate in, like town-sponsored educational programs and drug, drug abuse prevention type programs, which I liked. If that was to be eliminated, could we, could we use some front, some funds from the, to pay for that and then kind of like claim it as a community impact fee?
So that, that is present in your existing HCA, and I think that that is one of, so the, the community impact fee, the, the way the law was changed, among other things, is to be very clear that you, the community impact fee is limited, and you must document costs that are directly related to a specific business in order to charge them a community impact fee. And so any fee that is more of a general, a general expense for the town, like a community education program, is likely to be much more difficult to document as being directly related to the fee. I'm not saying it's impossible, I'm not saying it's unlawful, but that is one of the things that you could see any marijuana establishment target, or the CCC target, and say, "This is not a lawful community impact fee." So if we were to switch from the model to the, or, excuse me, from the existing to the model, we would lose, we have specifically listed community education as an agreed-upon impact on the community. Like, we've talked about it, you know, there's, there's three businesses, it's reasonably likely, and both parties agreed. If you take that out, then it's, it's a purely factual question of whether or not it is a direct impact from a, a business. So I, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that it's, it's less, you don't have the contract backing it up anymore, and so it's less likely that you could charge a community impact fee to support a community education program, as opposed to, say, you know, a, a police detail or, you know, something that you can directly show that there was a, an expense strictly attributable to them. So I think that educational programs are likely to be difficult, and it's, it's also not something that's likely to be coming from the ZBA. So, you know, it's just not really under their jurisdiction.
Anyone else have any thoughts?
If I, if I can just add, so the, the host community agreement is an agreement, you know, is negotiated by the town and the applicant. Any amendment to that is also going to have to be negotiated. And so when we're talking about, you know, what does the town want to do with its HCA, well, you, you don't have to agree to any change that you're not comfortable with, but they don't either. So they, every, you know, their interest primarily, obviously, is seeing themselves be open for business, and I think the town has an interest in seeing them open for business as well. But if, you know, whatever direction you give me tonight, I have to go back to the applicant and say, you know, "This is what the town would like to do, are you on board with that, and, you know, how do we move forward with that?" Ultimately, if, you know, as has been proposed, the town were to approve or authorize, you know, the model HCA conditional upon applicants going back to the ZBA for further special permit approval, you know, that, that would be the message I would convey to them, but that would also allow them to go back to the CCC and say, "We have an approved model HCA," proceed with that special permit process separately, because they can do both at the same time, and I think it would, you know, John and his board can, can work quickly, but they would also be able to go back to the CCC as soon as we have an approved model HCA and get that process rolling as well.
Yes.
And I think one other thing I brought up, may have brought up at the last meeting, is that there's language in our current HCA that, sort of a reopener. So if, if one establishment were to come and get a more favorable agreement, the others could appeal and modify their HCA's. This is that exact situation, you know, we're offering something that's a little less stringent if we were to go with the model than the current one. It may give us a reason to reach out to the other two applicants that have not been proceeding as quickly and kind of gauge their interest. Are you still interested in operating? Or would you like to turn your HCA back in? Yeah. So we could kind of weigh if they're still continuing.
All right, I'd like a motion from the board to do what we've been talking about, which is basically to accede to the CCC and adopt their model MCA with, with the addition of what the zoning board of appeals can come up with.
So conditional upon seeking further approval from the ZBA?
Be understanding of the board? Would someone like to make a motion that expresses that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, and hopefully we have notes well enough to understand it. Yes?
Just, just quickly, I'm a bit torn. I think I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I originally voted against this at town meeting.
So did I.
But town meeting voted for it. You know, I think that the town spoke pretty clearly about the direction they want us to go in. We're putting a little bit of a bind, but I think it's a pretty good compromise. I am bummed about the educational stuff, but maybe we can send a message to the schools that we really do want some of that beefed up, really.
Right. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? We, it's been moved and seconded, right?
Yep, Laura, me.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Sean. Thank you, thank you, John, you have some work to do.
Exactly, I voted against it, too.
You voted for it, Mr.?
Well, town meeting says, we do.
Okay, Attorney Summers, Park Avenue School.
Let me just make a quick note, if you don't?
All right.
Okay, so Park Avenue School, I haven't been before you on this, I'm not sure if I've ever been before you on this, but it's been parcolating for a while. The, the, Park Avenue School was, was a Whitman school for a while. The town acquired the property back in 1949. You purchased the land from George J.J. Clark, and there is a provision in the deed that says that the property is to be used by the town of Whitman for school purposes only.
School purposes, is that the exact word?
For school purposes only, is the exact word.
Not educational.
For school purposes only, is the exact word. So, so the town did?
School-like purposes?
So the town did construct a school on the property, and you still have a school building there, and it was used as a school and used by the regional school district as a school.
a school, but the last time it was actually used as a school was back in 2005, 2006. You know, you've got a new school building, kids moved around, and the building was no longer needed. In 2010, the regional school committee voted to return the school and the property back to the town of Whitman because it wasn't needed for educational purposes at the time, and the regional school committee indicated that it would never be needed again for regional school purposes. So the, since then, you know, my office has looked into, you know, what the town can do with the property, given that the deed says that it is to be used for school purposes only. There is a little bit of lack of clarity on that, for school purposes only, you know, it's not, it doesn't necessarily mean what you might think it means in property law. There is a significant question about whether it's a deed restriction and whether the town purchased the property for fair market value, or if it was a gift from the donor. So the, what we've come to the conclusion, you know, as your town council, is that the best course of action would be to resolve that uncertainty in court, to the extent you want to do anything with the property. Now or in the future, and so, you know, I'm here tonight to find out what exactly you would like to do with the property, you know, as a board, obviously, and we certainly understand that there may be a need for further input. My understanding is that the building is decrepit and can't really be used, so it's really a question of, you know, this parcel of land, what do you want to do with it? You have a few options. So one option would be to argue that, you know, the land was purchased and there is, you know, the restriction, or the for school purposes only language in the deed is not a restriction, that the town can, you know, further dispose of the land as it sees fit. That would be, you know, sort of a difficult road to hoe, so to speak, you know, we would have to, we would likely see a challenge from either the AG's office or, you know, potentially an heir to the property, but that would be an option. Another option, which we've discussed with the attorney general's office in terms of seeking their assent to a declaratory judgment regarding our ability to use the property, would be to identify a specific purpose for which we want to use the property, to say, we, let's assume, for sake of argument, that we did have to use the land for school purposes only. Well, we did that, and we satisfied that condition, and now we are going to try to use it for something else. The AG's office is not necessarily opposed to that, but they are very interested in what specifically that would be. They would like to know before they answer whether or not they would support that in terms of a declaratory judgment. If you want to use it for something like a school, or something not like a school, if you want to, you know, sell the land and use the proceeds for school budget, or not for school budget, those are all questions that the AG's office has in terms of whether or not they, you know, will support it, and they haven't given us a definitive answer on that, but the more like a school the use is, whether it's selling or continuing to, you know, constructing something new, I think that the AG's office has signaled that they're more likely they are to support that. So if the town does want to do something with the property in the immediate future, we would suggest going to court, getting a declaratory judgment about what the town's rights are. If the town does not want to do something with the land in the near future, it might make sense to wait, because you may not have an answer about what you want to do with the property. That may be something that you need to determine later, and it doesn't necessarily make sense to go to court now, if you can't tell the court, you know, "Would you agree that we can do X with the property?" So we've been asked, you know, to take some action on this, to do something with this property for the town. We've come to a point where we feel we need to get more information from the town and from the board about what is it that you would like to do with the property, so that we know best how to file a request for declaratory judgment and work with the AG's office on this.
Yeah.
Can the town, could the town take that property, sell it, and use the money to put towards paying for the new middle school?
So I think that the signals we've gotten from the AG's office is that they would be supportive of that.
Be what?
Supportive of that.
Yeah, I mean, it goes from a school to school.
Yeah. That's a good thought. Yes.
Personally, I'm not interested in selling that property at all. I think holding onto the property and finding a way to develop it in a way that the community would benefit from is important. Cultural and recreational, is that overlap with school use? You know, like park-ish with, you know, like amphitheater kind of structure that the school could use and that the town could also use for cultural purposes, educational purposes? You know, to me, that's more in line with the way I'd like to see it developed, not, I think, short money to sell it and then use that for...
And the buyer could do what it wanted to do with it.
Right.
We could put the money towards the middle school, and who knows what would grow in that, in that land that we sold to somebody.
Because you're talking about costing a lot of money to knock that building down and just, you know, take care of it.
Yes, Laura?
I'm sure this isn't possible, but what a, it's not about the dog pound, it's about a state police canine academy with, then the dog pound, with a dog park, and with like a walking area for the people in the town. I know it's...
A school for dogs.
It's not a school for dogs, but...
It's a canine academy.
We have a dog that works for the town that does an amazing job, you know, and I understand it's almost like a joke-type...
Pooch Academy.
...area, but animals do an unbelievable amount of work for people. High-risk care is really amazing when it comes to animals, the unconditional love in the deaf, blind, handicapped, elderly, depressed, we live in a very volatile world, and I think that if we had something, that that would bring in residents from other communities. I don't see an awful lot, I mean, I'm not in that field, but I don't see a lot of canine units, and I know the police are always struggling, you know, maybe it'd be something that they're kind of renting the property. I'm not a lawyer, I would never claim to be. I want to enjoy my life simpler than that, but I think there's a lot, there's a lot of community interest in this, of what happens to this property, and I know you don't live in the town, but it's brought up an awful lot. I had a friend that wanted to do something for the deaf and blind, you know, as a school, and I know Mr. Frank Lyman had mentioned about the senior center as well, could be something that could be there. I realize it's a lot of money...
Seniors can go to school.
Yes.
They can be schooled.
But, you know, it's, I would like to see something more than another high-rise, but yet there, I do understand that the proximity to the train station and everything that is with growth and the government wanting these days, that might be an easier sell, but things to bring in, we're a small community, and there's a lot of community folks still here, and they would really wrap their arms around something that supported bringing in revenue from other people from other towns, and something that was like that. People generally like animals more than people, I found, but I'm open to all ideas, I'm not closed-minded at all, but if I wouldn't feel right if I didn't put it out there.
That's interesting.
I have a couple of thoughts on it, too. So the, my moonshot had always been to put a community center there, bringing the senior center, recreation, veteran services, all under one roof, but we've got three ongoing major building projects, assuming VOTEC passes in a couple of months. It's probably not the time to ask for a $20 million community center. So with that in mind, selling it, I don't see as a viable option just generally, because we just went through the MBTA community's discussion outlining the zone. This fell squarely in the half a mile radius, and we specifically left it out because there was really, the town owned it, and there was no interest in selling it a couple of months ago. So that would leave with kind of what we can do today if we wanted to come up with a specific use. We have community preservation funds that have been largely untapped, so we have a pool of money to do an amphitheater, I think is a great idea, or, you know, parks, baseball fields, something like that, but a specific recreation community use, I think, would be something that we could afford to do today or in the near future, and would give us something to take to the attorney general's office of, "We don't want to sell this property, we've used it as a school, now we'd like to use it as outdoor recreation space."
Probably take $2 million to take it down.
But we're bringing in about $200,000 a year in CPA funds that we can borrow against future revenue. It's, it's...
We could use that money.
Yeah.
Could maybe strategically use that money to develop that.
Even a 20-year loan would only need up half of our annual CPC funds...
Right.
...to knock it down than whatever else we want to do.
Well, Peter, you'll open up a conversation.
Yeah, and I absolutely don't need an answer tonight, but, you know, this conversation has to start somewhere, so...
Yeah, the conversation has to continue. It does.
I think what my office, you know, my office's job is to find out what the town wants to do and advise you whether you can do it, and if so, how. So we're just looking to find out what you want to do with this, you know, and at whatever point you are able to give us that direction, that'll make our lives a lot easier in terms of proceeding with the legal route of finding out whether you can and if so, how.
Thank you. It's definitely positive to hear that the AG's office is willing to listen to different possibilities, but yeah, we need to have more discussions, maybe we need to have a, I hate the idea of setting up a committee to do it.
I think poll the town, what they'd like to see going there.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Because I know that we were looking at that to possibly be a senior center, but seniors did not want to leave where they are. They just loved being by the park, you know, and it's not as big...
It's not that far away from the park.
Yeah, true. I mean, it could have been a big library, but...
Okay. Peter, thanks. Just give us something to think about.
Thank you.
Town administrator's report?
Yes, thank you. The treasurer collector Ken Laitel and I have prepared an amended procurement card policy. Recently, a town credit card was secured, has a credit limit of $5,000, and the treasurer collector is the cardholder for the town. So the procurement card, there is a procurement card form which accompanies the policy and will need to be completed before the treasurer collector could release the card for use to department heads. This is a single card, and it's primarily to be used for online technology-related renewals. I believe the fire chief also has something that he has to renew annually, and up till now, we've put it on credit cards, the former TA, myself, the IT director, the fire chief, and so this would, and then everybody gets reimbursed when they submit their credit card statement. So a lot of towns have just this procurement card, a single card for really online renewals. I do see that this would also be used for department heads if they have out-of-state travel and they're booking a flight, that might be a reason for that card, but this is not intended to circumvent the normal warrant process in any way, and it's for limited use purposes only. We also did a quick survey of surrounding towns, the ones that responded, the majority have one card. Just, it's not, we're not a corporation, it's not like all VPs and department heads get a corporate card, I mean, everything should go through the normal warrant process as it always has, but there's times that it can't.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss? Looking to adjourn is in order, then.
Some would.
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is done.
Awesome. Thank you.